Ran a little over with the Finance Committee, but... So before we begin, would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge which is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board hopes everyone had an enjoyable Patriots' Day, and congratulations to those who participated in the marathon. And the town of Millville's hearts go out to the young man, soldier that was buried yesterday in Whiten'sville. Mr. Dawson, about 22 years old, graduate of Alatech, was killed in action in Afghanistan. And pretty coincidentally, it was kinda weird that he was actually buried on Patriots' Day. So, you know, our hearts go out to that family. And we thank them for their son's service. Reminder that street sweeping is scheduled to continue for the remainder of this week. Also, most schools are closed this week for vacation, so please take caution on the roadways for the children. The annual town reports are currently at the printer being printed. So expect the delivery button in Town Hall this month. We should have them up next week for the regular meeting. And copies will be also available at the town meeting. Finance Committee's public hearing on the financial articles that appear on the special and annual town meetings will be held Wednesday, May 6th at 7:00 PM. And that'll be here at the Town Hall. Any questions or concerns, comments about the budget, the Board encourages you to attend the public hearing. And please don't wait until the meeting. And that's... don't wait for the town meeting, but definitely bring your questions to the hearing. And special and annual town meetings are scheduled for Monday, May 11th, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Millville Elementary School. And we did just speak that if the town meeting runs into 10 or 11 o'clock at night and we've still got a long ways to go, we will continue the meeting on that Tuesday night, May 12th, at 7:00 PM. And that'll be at the school. So, just to inform people ahead. Tomorrow marks the 45th anniversary of Earth Day, an annual event celebrated every April 22nd, when events are held worldwide in support of environmental protection. Many local volunteer groups, organizations have scheduled cleanup days over the next few weeks. You may see some of them in town. However, don't feel as though you need to belong to a group. With this nice weather finally here, maybe we can all pitch in and clean up around our properties or do whatever we can individually do to help improve the environment. Finally, also tomorrow, many companies and businesses will celebrate Administrative Professionals Day. Helen, why'd you put that in there? Are you waiting for flowers or something?
No.
The Board would like to take a moment to acknowledge and extend our appreciation to all the individuals who work on behalf of the town of Millville. The administrative staff, public safety employees, appointed and elected officials, and volunteers, all working very hard in our town buildings and departments in order to keep the town of Millville and services we provide to the residents running as efficiently and effectively as possible. Thank you for all the work you did. Okay, so now we're gonna jump ship on the agenda. If anybody... nobody minds. And we're gonna talk about some concerns at 171 Central Street.
And this will be under the first public forum?
Yes, yeah. So...
Residents?
Any resident would like to speak on the concerns or...
Yeah, our concerns...
If you could come up just up to the mic that way, that we're being recorded.
Sorry, can I just please have your name and address?
O'Brien, 47 B Providence Street. Yeah, our concerns that we have is, over the past seven years, the land behind our properties have been cleared up. All the trees are gone, more trees are being taken down. Stuff has been... a lot of dirt has been taken out. And then recently, a lot of 18-wheeler was coming in with fill that doesn't seem to be clean fill. There's pipes, there's insulation, plastic, things like that. And our concern is, what else is being buried out there? During the summertime with some, you know, the past few years, there's been like a dust storm out there. Pretty much we can't even run out of our backyards. The dust is just that bad. And we heard so many stories of a blueberry farm going out there, a power farm, a tree farm, a house being built. It's just been going on for so long, and no one knows what's going on out there. But again, our biggest concern is the stuff that's being poured in right now and also our property lines. You know, we've seen sticks out there, say a five-foot buffer zone, but no one's ever seen a surveyor out there. And some of the sticks, some of the property owners know it's actually on their property by about 10 feet.
Okay.
And then trees have been taken down or are going to be taken down. Right now, they're currently behind 47A and 47B Providence Street, where we were promised those trees were never coming down. Maybe there's a buffer zone, but I guess that didn't work out. They're coming down now.
So, we had discussions with those folks last year. Every year.
Right, this has been ongoing for several years. And I can speak to the earth being removed. That was the first issue that we... the Earth Removal Board dealt with, which the Earth Removal Board consists of all five members of the Selectment, a member of the Conservation Commission, and a member of the Plan Board. And the Earth Removal Agent is the Zoning Commissioner. So the applicant did attempt to obtain a permit for that. And what ended up happening was along with his permit, he filed agricultural plans, which was the blueberry farm. And what the town's bylaws say, under the Earth Removal Bylaws, is that agricultural purposes are exempt. So he was completely exempt from even having to complete an application. If he can show a plan that says it's for agricultural purposes, the town has no right to go through an application process. So that's where the exemption came in for him removing the fill. Now bringing in fill is a completely different animal that we just learned of last week. I know the chief of police and fire was up on the property last week. And I had a telephone conference with the building commissioner on Thursday, and he was scheduled to do his site inspection on Friday. So I have not received the outcome of his report from Friday. According to what Chief Landry told me earlier today, he did speak with the gentleman directly, the property owner. And the owner alleged that he was not in fact bringing in fill, but what was there is stuff that was unearthed when he was removing fill. So...
What is that supposed to mean?
Well, the pipes and the insulation that Mr. O'Brien mentioned, he's claiming to have dug up when he was removing fill.
Okay, so where is the story?
Well, I guess that's what is on the property now.
And building materials, plus everything, there's nothing on that property.
My question is, how do you excavate pipes and insulation off a piece of land that's never been developed?
Where did the... Where did the, you know, minimum of four eighteen...
Ma'am, you'd rather come up and speak to the...
Where did the minimum of four eighteen-wheeler dump trucks that I saw come in your property? A couple weekends.
Well, this is... where...
That's... I mean, you can't just sit there and say, "We have pictures of this stuff." I'll show you.
Well, my understanding, and I believe it's the Board's understanding, I could be wrong, there's nothing supposed to be going on over there.
Well, there was the cease and desist for mass electric that has since been removed.
Yeah, but he's not...
My question is, who confirmed that the cease and desist has been removed? Did anybody do that?
We got a letter.
Right, this was a little while back. A little while back, yeah. Over a year ago.
Still, we're not aware of him. He's not supposed to be bringing...
Helen, what year was the original...
The only problem with this...
Oh, true, please submit it. It's up in the building inspector's office now. It's gonna be, it's gonna be five, four or five years ago.
I have to pick it up and camera too.
Well, I'm just... no, because if I... if this board is...
Watch out, I'm standing.
And this is ugly. I understand.
Excuse me.
He's not supposed to be bringing anything in there at all. He's not even supposed to have time here to sit there or taking anything out.
Well, under the agricultural plan. What... you don't remember the year it was submitted?
I would have to pull the file. I remember in 2013, he went down a street, in Central Street, and we got petition.
Yeah.
And that's when everything came about with the cease and desist.
I remember that.
I don't know when it was lifted, sometime after that. But someone was told that the National Grid is coming to take out the towers and they're giving up their easement, which...
They're putting new towers in.
New ones. They're bringing up nothing.
They're replacing the old.
They... I was told...
So they are coming out?
I was told on Friday that those towers are coming out and that they're giving up their easement for the property owner to...
No. Mr. Chairman? No, because we just signed... we just resigned.
They've been working on the other side of the property, of the...
Looking at the National Grid report this past Friday, as a matter of fact, they said they were 100%, had 100% of the lattice towers removed, along that line, but there are four of them in our town.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the situation... You know, it could have...
We all know that they're not giving up any land easements or anything.
That's what I'm saying, it's very rare for them to give up a piece of their property.
They came last year and informed us that the new poles were not gonna extend past the easement and just, you know, ensuring to us that they were still gonna be within their original easement back in 1958, was it?
And they put everything back the way it was.
They're not gonna give that up. They're spending hundreds of millions of dollars...
That's what I'm saying.
From Cranston Road Island up to Millbury.
Right, right. So someone's... someone, obviously the property owner, is mistaken in that information that he's giving out to other people who are going down to check on him and see what he's doing. So...
That's right. Easements that are, you know, being dissolved.
That's what I'm... it's, you know...
That we're aware of.
Takes a long time for them to get it. Why would they just give it up?
Yeah, no, they wouldn't.
So, I have my pictures still on my card, my memory card, all dated. I transferred everything to my Kindle, so if you guys wanted to look...
You want to give the Board pictures, you give it to our Executive Secretary, but I would inform you that it gotta be a date or something like that.
Yeah, I can send through email, everything's dated.
To protect us and say, "This isn't hearsay, it's a date."
And if you can geotag any of your pictures, then the location is confirmed, the time, date, everything is confirmed now.
Even with the trucks and everything, the more information this town helps the Selectmen and the building inspector, the better off we are when we have to, you know, take care of, take action. So if the town people wanna help us out with that, that would be great. Just to the town, you know, Executive Secretary, and we'll compile all that and we'll put it to the building inspector and the chief of police.
Yeah, the buildings.
We're not playing, just letting this go by. We've been at this. We're not gonna let the residents be upset over this. We're gonna go to bat and make sure it's done correctly. And for what I'm seeing right now, I don't like what I'm seeing. This is not right at all. It needs to stop immediately with a better view on the welfare of children and your water and everything else.
We all have wells.
Our wells are even 100 feet away from really working.
That's what I mean.
That's the biggest thing.
My concerns would be the applicability of the operating standards of the Earth Removal Bylaw. How does that apply to a situation like that? Yes, the things that I would note would be the 50-foot...
The buffer?
Yeah.
What's a buffer for people?
It's supposed to be 50 feet.
50 feet.
Well, we don't have that anymore. That's gone, that's gone on.
The gentleman wants to come up and talk.
Yes, sure.
Well, this is something that we need to...
Hi, this is the French shop in 19B Providence Street. As far as the buffer, I know that there are trees that are definitely on our property that look like they got knocked down by accident. They tethered them up, but since have you moved them, they died.
Yeah.
But I also just have a question. I don't... I'm not very knowledgeable on this stuff, but I was talking to my friend who does work in conservation, and she... she had said something about, in order to be zoned agricultural, it had to have not been, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it fallow, but whatever, it had, what she explained to me was, like, it had to have been used agricultural. It's not, it was a forest and today it's agricultural land. And that there had to have been a forestry plan in place. Was there a forestry plan? And my other question is, was it wetlands out there? Because there was definitely a pond. We used to go back there, there was a beautiful pond with big trees over it that no longer exists. So it was filled in. So is that, is there any wetland protection act that was violated back there? Like, was that...
If that happened, it definitely is.
So when he came in and decided to do this, was there anybody that went back there, checked the wetlands, checked what he was doing? Did he have a clear plant design, a clear plan in place? Or can it just be, "Today, I'm going to decide to clear an entire forest. Now we can see the wetland," you know, like it just changed our whole, how much our homes are? I mean, that was honestly part of why we bought that house. It's just the pride of that there.
Right.
Now, you know what I mean? So I'm just, you know, now the highway's noisy and everything. And I understand that that's not his problem, but just what was in plan? Did anyone check those wetlands? Was there a plan in place or are any of these laws being violated? And that's just what I... we were just curious to find out what the... At the beginning, what was this plan? Like, what was looked into? Was there anything or is it done here?
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. He did have a specific plan. And the file is, I believe, up in the building commissioner's office. There were diagrams of what this blueberry farm was going to look like. So there was a specific plan. It was signed off on whoever designed that for him. To my knowledge, that piece of property was never zoned as forest land. You would have to double-check with the assessor's office, but I don't believe that was forest land.
And that the water back there and stuff is...
With respect to the Conservation Commission, they were informed at least two or three times, and they did conduct site visits.
Okay.
In fact, we just let them know again last week. So they have been out there, they're familiar with it.
Okay. And is that just one of those things where you can, you think there's a plan, but then there's, but not that plan has been here, so it's not obviously not. I've heard different ideas in the meantime, so is it that you can just...
The last time, before earth started coming in, the last time we checked up on the gentleman was back in October, because it was, earth was still coming out. And we said, gee, you know, it's been quite a while now, what's going on? And at that time, back in October, he said, "I'm actually done." He said, "I'm not gonna be taking anything else out. I've taken out all that I can take out, so I'm pretty much done." And that was our former building inspector, Mr. Emity, who brought that to my attention, that there was nothing he could do because the gentleman claimed that he was done and wasn't going to be... Right, taking out. There was no mention of anything coming in, but he was done taking out.
So is there a plan to what that will be now? Is it going to...
No, so that's all that we're aware of. I don't know what the purpose of taking the earth in is. I don't know that there is any law against taking fill into your property, so...
Taking down all that, those trees?
Needs to be clean fill.
But if, but what's the, if the plan is no longer a blueberry field, is there a plan or is the land just, you know, stripped for nothing? Like, just sad to see, you know, just to see the land just ripped like that for just to sit and be dumped, you know what I mean?
Oh, I understand.
So I'm just, I'm just curious. I have another question, actually, as far as the National Grid thing.
Yeah.
So there's currently one of the poles, the towers behind, like a little over, so past 25 Providence Street. Are those being taken out and going to be rewired, or is it...
No.
I'm just curious. So I asked once and someone said it's actually a different way, but...
Yeah. The new poles, I don't know, I don't even know if any of the new ones are up yet over there.
No, it's an old one, it's been there since it was there. I'm kind of hooked up.
Over on Chestnut Hill Road, that power line, if you see those?
Yeah.
That's what's going up.
Okay.
And...
But you don't know which, if it's actually...
I don't know which ones...
I think it's gonna be on the one over the, into the Rhode Island line.
Yeah, and it's the ones where there are wires. Their whole project is to increase the voltage and...
Okay, so the ones that don't have wires probably still won't have wires then?
Right, yeah, those, yeah.
I just wanted to know, as many questions in the day, but we've got...
Yeah, those are still gonna be going there.
They appear to be derelict.
And then, like, they cut down all the poles on Chestnut Hill Road.
Okay, right, you can see.
And that's the same line.
Okay.
And it's the same line that you see going, being constructed way up on 146 and...
Right, so more goes that way than all the ones that go this way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Yes. Sure.
I live at 19F Providence Street. And comments I'd like to make is, I can tell you exactly when that started. It will be five years, the Monday after Thanksgiving. And it's been dug up. It's loud there now, it's ugly, you can't take a walk back there. The water is starting to come up again because of all the rain that we've had, I presume. And when this first started, I came home from work one day. It was, the trees were all down and I'm wondering what is going on. So I called the Town Hall and I inquired, because I thought, oh my God, is a Walmart going on? You know, what's going on here? And I called the Town Hall and I thought, what's going on, you know, back there? I really don't know. But the person that owns the land can do anything they want because they are grandfathered in, I'm saying.
Really?
I work for an engineering, civil engineering company. And you can't just destroy wetlands like that. You have to notify the butters that stuff is going on. But yet, you know, trucks are coming in, they're going out, they're coming in, they're going out. And I've yet to see a blueberry after five years, so when is all this happening? After that, I heard it was gonna be a landscaping, somebody owned a landscaping company, and that was gonna be hot houses or rubbish shrubs or whatever. And the front was gonna be storage units. None of that is happening. The only thing that happens is the trucks come in, dig up the dirt, they sell it, come back, put it, that's all they do, all they do. It's just, and they're encroaching on our property lines.
Yeah.
We definitely don't have a 50-foot buffer. We're lucky we have five. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So are...
I think there's a lot of questions that we need answered. I think we're probably gonna need that plan.
Yeah.
We're also gonna need to speak to the gentleman to find out, I mean, if there's flags up there saying it's surveyed as a buffer line, you know, we wanna make sure that it was actually surveyed.
We're here, so I...
Okay, okay. If you'd like to.
Your name is Louis O'Brien? Yeah, Louis O'Brien. So anyway, just to clarify with the 50-foot buffer, isn't that from the wetlands?
No, that's from residential property.
And what's that consist, is that on their side also? They have to stay 50 feet from us?
No, that's in terms of excavation. If you're gonna excavate, you can't excavate within 50 feet of the residential property line.
And same with them? If they're gonna do a project or something, they can't excavate?
If they excavate, they come in for a permit for earth removal if they have to. And then there's also a mitigation plan that's involved with that.
But they can build a shed, they can build a barn or whatever, as long as they're... Well, the setback for a barn is 30 feet. A shed, under 120 square feet, 120 square feet... Oh, no, I'm sorry, the new state law is 200 square feet or less, is the height of the, of the peak of the roof, the ridge from the ground, is the distance from the, from the property line.
How about if they're right on the property line?
Well, they can't be right on the property.
Well, what if they are, I guess?
Well, then that's...
They're necessarily responsible.
I've had the land surveyed, so I'm very aware, and we put in just five-foot offsets just so that we didn't encroach anymore, you know?
Yeah.
But have you come in to that 50-foot zone to excavate material? I believe you have, from what I heard.
Well, I was unaware of any 50-foot setback.
Right, your bylaw.
But I thought we were exempt.
No.
Why would you be exempt?
Because with being agricultural.
No, no.
You're exempt of going through the process. You're not exempt for following the...
But even to level our land, we can't, we can't even...
But you still have to go by the... You say go by the...
In the bylaws, it's...
Part of the bylaw is you're not exempt as an agricultural.
It's agricultural, it's only incidental, the earth removal is only incidental to the agricultural farming of project. And that's more than just incidental work that you're doing there.
Well, can I explain something? When they built the houses in the front, along, I don't know what street that is, Central?
No, the other one. Providence Street?
Providence Street. They got the bulldozers and they started from the street and they came down and they piled all the loom in the back of the lots. Then they built the houses, then they cut that piece of property off that we own now. And there's a mound of loom that was 30 feet high, and all the trees all grow on their property. There's not a piece of hardwood on it, it's all softwood junk. And so all we were doing was taking the loom back and we're gonna be putting it back on the flat land. Just spreading it back over? Just spreading it back over.
I have a question. Would you be more than five feet below the original grade after you...
We're gonna be higher.
You're gonna be higher than the original grade?
Oh, not with it. The loom is, we'll be a little, we're taking the loom pile out and spreading that just forward.
Okay.
So I don't understand. Well, what happened, we brought in some bricks and blocks. Solid fill, just because we still had a... Because the loom is so deep that I was gonna put some of the solid blocks and stuff in the bottom.
You have solid blocks, are they concrete blocks?
Yes.
That's hazardous waste.
Concrete block?
Yeah.
Brick? So Matt, you're saying solid block, block is not brick. Block is concrete, that's hazardous waste. So you're bringing in hazardous waste?
Well...
Well, what?
Well, I'm gonna say they crush it.
You're telling us, that's what you're telling me.
No, they crush it and now it's not hazardous waste anymore. If it's six inches minus, six inches minus.
I wanna see that on a certified document that statement you just made in front of all these people, that if I go and I take this concrete block and I crush it, that means all of a sudden it's not hazardous.
Are you talking about concrete cement?
What do you think blocks may have, concrete?
We use it all the time, replant concrete.
It's hazardous waste.
Well, everything that we build...
Let me tell you something, if you go to Bonnie Brothers or you go to Roosevelt, when they come back with their cement trucks, you know they have to, they have to dematize all their concrete, take all the lime out because they can't put it in the ground?
Yeah, but maybe because it's in a liquid state. How about if it's solid?
It's still hazardous waste. So you're bringing in hazardous waste and dumping it on that land? Hold on.
But I think the bigger question is, in the original plan, was it ever deemed that there would be fill? That you would be bringing something in?
We were altering the land, I mean, it was all...
Yeah, but in your original application...
You're also bringing hazardous waste and bringing in loads of dirt, which I don't think you're supposed to be doing that.
But in your original application, there must have been a plan that you were going to do, you know, and how you were going to get there. You're gonna remove the dirt, you're gonna do this. What was that plan? Was there any time in that plan we're going to bring in blocks and pipes or whatever?
No, the pipes we brought in for the job, so I don't know what pipes are really... Can I see those pictures?
So my question is...
I mean, behind our land was considered a dump, as far as I was concerned. They've been dumping there for like 30 years. All the neighbors dumped all their junk on our land. It was a lot of stuff. It's a lot of their stuff.
That's all for your sake.
No, it was, I'm bringing it out there, I can show you. It's still there. A lot is still there.
How do I know that you put it there?
Regardless, I mean, I'll...
Regardless, I mean, I, I'll...
Exactly, regardless, regardless, you guys just said to the board here and everybody out in the audience that you're bringing in concrete block which is hazardous waste, you're bringing fill back into the property. I don't think you're supposed to be doing that. I, like Jennifer said, I, I don't see a plan that you guys are gonna do that.
We had a plan with the conservation, we were gonna level the land and make fields there. And it, there's no stipulation on a farm, like it could be wood chips, it could be, uh, bark mulch, could be trees, could be firewood, could be plants, could be pumpkins, could be corn, pigs, hay.
That's not hazardous waste, my friend.
No, no, but, all right, so that, that part there, maybe we shouldn't have brought in the, the concrete block. So yes, we're wrong.
I'll tell you right now, if that's the story...
So let us haul it out then, instead of like coming again...
No, I'm not gonna say anything like that, okay, to you guys. Cause it seems that you guys are doing whatever you wanna do and...
No, we're not, we've been down here and it's taken seven years because we keep getting stopped from being...
Well, you're getting stopped because you keep violating certain things.
What, what have we violated? What have we violated?
This is actually your first time here, so...
Yeah, we haven't violated anything, we've been accused of a lot of...
Have you all read this?
What's that?
That, that's the...
I think what we need to do is probably come back together, you need to read over, we need to make sure we have the plan. You need to make sure all our documents are in order, that you have all the documents that you need in order to do what you need to do, but also to keep our residents' buffer zone, to keep the protection of the conservation, and all those pieces. I think sitting here tonight is the start of a conversation, but there's a lot of information, obviously, that you aren't aware of with the, with the bylaws, even though you have the agricultural, um, waiver. I think we need to relook at the plan, cause it's, it's not being followed. To the inten- to the intent that it was taken out as.
Okay.
So we need to relook at that, that's just my... But I think, I think we need some education for everyone around the table to make sure we all know what it should look like, and then put that into place. That's just my suggestion. Cause we can talk in circles with accusations and pictures tonight, but that's not gonna get us anywhere. So I don't know if we can set up another time, get all this information, get the original plan, let's see what it looks like, and then try to move forward.
I would suggest maybe the first step might be for Mr. Iarussi to meet with our building commissioner, who's also the earth removal agent.
And he's been out there already, right?
Right. Unfortunately, Mr. Sheehan will not be in the office tomorrow night for his usual, uh, Wednesday evening hours, but perhaps next Wednesday, if you're available, uh, in the evening, you could come in and meet with, uh, Mr. Sheehan. I'm not sure, um, you met with him already, he was gonna do, uh, an inspection on Friday. So if you were, you know, at the property Friday, maybe you, you saw him.
Yeah, I'd be there.
But, um, I think that would be the first step.
I think he was at last Friday, right? He was at last Friday.
He already did a site visit?
Yes.
Last Friday. Right, so we need to find out what his findings are.
Right, I'm not sure what his findings were.
The police chief was there, he, he did all that stuff.
I was, uh, accused of burying tires and building debris, and so he looked over and he was what was there.
Like I said, we haven't got anything back from the building inspector or the chief or anything, so...
I met with the chief the other day and he, and he said he was there and he didn't see anything wrong. He says, I don't know about the blocks and the bricks.
I think what, I talked to him Wednesday, um, I, I live not on that side of Providence Street, but the opposite side of Providence, so I can see and I can hear my neighbors. Um, but I'm not in about it. And he did pull in, he says, there's nothing he sees that he can enforce. And that's what he said to me. So whether or not he thinks what you're doing is fine or not fine, but there's nothing that he can do as a police officer or a fire chief, um, for what's going on there.
Right.
Because I know our fire department made a visit a couple of years ago because there was some, was it diesel? There was some, um, cans or...
He's been involved for everything, so...
So, um, so I think that was, that was his, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but that's how I understood it from him.
Like that 50-foot buff- buffer, I thought we could go right up to the property lines, just level it.
No, no. That's why that buffer's there. So you can't do it and they can't do it, it's gotta be...
I believe you can...
And if someone built, if someone built, um...
You just can't excavate.
Their shed on the property line?
You can, you can plant trees or grass up to the buffer, up to the property.
Up in front.
You can't excavate, is what the bylaws is, in that 50-foot. Yeah. Like you could, you could yard break or whatever, clean it, but you can't change the elevation.
You can't take the trees that...
If it was clear, if it was clear, but there's no excavating, right? Is that how it reads?
Right, you can't change the elevation of the, and you can make it better, but you can't change the elevation.
What's better?
Well, if it's, if it's nothing but, say if weeds today are there, you could leave there and it had, be grass, or, or shrubbery or trees or whatever, plants, that's different. As long as you don't excavate it within that 50-foot.
Changing that.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, can't go below five foot, um, you gotta be more than five foot above the water table.
Yeah, but I, I can hear that.
And if you dig down below that, you're in trouble.
The problem was, when they were building, they pushed all the loom...
They pushed a hill of loom back there, so that's, so it's, it's a hill of loom, it's a pile.
But my, those houses were built...
Yeah, at least like five years ago.
So I'm, I'm imagining...
Thirty years ago.
Yeah, I think so, I think it was in the eighties. Um, and I'm trying to imagine a pile of loom over 30 years, because if it's loom, it's, it's soft.
Yeah.
I, I, I imagine over the years that that has probably come down, it's not as big as if... And I, I don't doubt, because all those houses there were built at a time where regulations were not always the best or overseen, I'll leave it at that. Um, so I can't, you know, but I'm trying to picture a pile of loom over 30 years isn't going to be what it was maybe when it first occurred, and that maybe there was something.
Well, what happened?
Or leaves from the neighbors, I dumped my leaves in my backyard and I know it's, it's my, my neighbor's property, but we, we share woods, so, you know, those things do happen, and I, I, I will agree to that. But I also think that, you know, there is some education that needs to be, be done as far as this buffer...
I would, I would like to have a meeting out there with all of us.
And, um...
Walk this thing over and see what we have there.
Cause I'm interested also, I'm interested also, sir, is making sure that it was surveyed by a company. So I would like documentation, I like documentation. Because usually this, they put the surveying pens in, I don't, you said they say five-foot buffer on them? I don't usually, usually see, like, the flag for your property...
It's a five-foot offset property line is what it is.
We kept that five feet from the actual property.
And it's done by, I'm just saying, and it's, it was professionally done.
Yes, but I think it would, I think it would go to your credit if you were able to show documentation of, of that project.
I think it might be worthwhile for the property owners to get together and, and do, have a survey done on their own.
Right, everyone should know where the property line is, so, I mean, we can't take their land, they can't take our land. So it's, it's not like we're trying to do that, but I don't know, if, if, if they just wanna stop us from taking trees down on our land.
So I think, maybe can we schedule a meeting to get the plans, to, to get some clarification on this?
Yep.
Also, um, Helen, maybe what we need to do is if that plan has been altered, or can we ask for an updated plan for that agricultural plan that's submitted, to make sure that it follows everything? I'm just trying to think of all the things we need to cover.
We have another question.
Thank you, um, I just, I had a question about the crushed concrete. So my concern is that a piece of concrete buried near my well is one thing, crushed into what might be now mixed in with the dirt near my well is another thing. So who's going to be in charge of making sure that that...
I think the first thing to do is to hear from the building inspector and find out what his findings are over that.
Okay.
So that way, cause that's what he's there for.
Yeah, I just want to make sure...
And he will tell us, or the fort, and these gentlemen here, exactly where they stand with certain questions that we need to have answered, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, um, just as a word of caution, this would be a matter that the Earth Removal Board would need to discuss, so really, anything would need to be done at a hosted meeting of the Earth Removal Board in connection with, um, Mrs. Wing's recommendations.
So we'll...
So you would need to...
We'll find out from the conservation and the building inspector when, when they're available.
Too bad we couldn't get a meeting, they had the board, the building inspector, the board of health, and the conservation.
Sure, we can, we can attempt to...
We all take a walk around here, see what we have.
We've done that in the past, but you do a site visit and then come back here and have our meeting discussion?
Every other time, yeah. And see what we have in our land here.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, definitely.
It'd be detrimental to all of us.
Yep.
You know? And, uh, now what do you wanna see, like a surveyed plan of the land?
I...
We have it, we have it, the paper, the bill, we have it.
Yeah, I think if we get a meeting and try to figure out, I mean, if, the more information, the better. I'm sure if you have that, then I would bring it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to think, I haven't seen, I haven't seen what was submitted seven years ago.
Yeah.
You know, it's upstairs, we're gonna have to get it, we're gonna have to look at it and see. So I, I mean, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head what, what we would need to see to make sure that everyone's investments are taken care of here.
And I'd like to also mention those towers, they have the main line, and then this was like a spur that we're talking about in the back of our, on our property, in the back of our, uh, house lot. These towers aren't being used, and they tore down all the ones along the main trunk line.
Mm-hmm.
But the spur, they left them alone, they're doing the woods.
There's nothing we can do that's up to them, what they wanna do, would it be?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not doing anything.
Doesn't matter, it's up to them.
No, but what I'm saying, they're talking about the new line, that's true, they took them all down, but the ones on the spur, they're, they're not taking those towers down.
Right.
Or they're not giving up the, the easement or anything, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, we knew that, the National Guard did, did tell us that those are staying.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr. Iarussi, just out of curiosity, do you have a, a current plan or vision for what's gonna be on that land in the future?
I think we just have in our heads that we're gonna flatten it down, and we, I've been talking to, uh, Rice Farm over there with Woon Socket, the big cow farm there, and he would like to plant corn here someday if I ever get a level.
Just something to agricultural, you know, plant something, grow, that's, you know...
The chief kept coming to me...
And it's not necessarily for people to come eat my blueberries, it's for me. I don't, you know, I'm not here to sell blueberries.
We just happened to be talking at the time, and we said we could plant blueberry bushes. Now all of a sudden we've got a blueberry farm. I mean, we just mentioned, you know, we could grow blueberries in there, pumpkins.
My daughters have horses and stuff, and, I mean, I could pasture them there. So I mean, this, it, it's a wasted piece of land the way it was, it's all up and down.
It, it was an abandoned gravel pit, that's what it was, when they put 146 in. Camnelli and Cotty went in there and took out 100, 200,000 yards of gravel, and left out the topsoil, and they brought up the 146, and that, that had to be over 40, 50 years ago. Because the trees that were taken down, they're probably dead dig around, it takes quite a while for a tree to grow. So when they pushed all that loom down, the trees grew on it. So all I'm doing was just flattening it out.
We were, we're putting the loom back down, it's grown brass now, or weeds, I mean, but it's, it's growing, so I mean, there's no more dust, you know, when we were putting it down.
Like I said, we can go on and on and on, but we need to hear from the other boards, and then they can get back to us and tell us what...
So what do you, what do you say, next Wednesday?
Yeah, probably next Wednesday, that will, uh, root for that.
He's upstairs from 6:00 to 8:00 on Wednesday night.
You have a card or something, uh, name, I can get it up to you. All right, boys, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is that it for public forum?
Wait, just a...
Yes.
There's some things that are not, uh, accurate. On the back of my property, which is 51A and 51B.
Oh, I'm the executive secretary.
We do not have a 30-foot height of loom that was pushed from where they developed that. We don't have that, none of them. Actually, a lot of the people do not have that.
Okay.
Um, so that is not accurate information.
All right, so this is all the stuff, why we wanna do a site visit?
Right.
With the rest of our Earth Removal Board, and any of you folks that wanna be there as well.
And then, uh, following that, we'll, we'll probably end up back in this room and finish that meeting. So these are the questions you wanna have with you that, that day. Right. Can I just say, um, what I've seen in there and other neighbors is plastic and metal conduit, metal angle iron, square metal tubing, pipe clamps, PVC plastic corrugated metal pipe, rebar, miscellaneous plastic and metal items, wood, pressure-treated hose and rubber, rubber hosing. That is what you can see in the pile of what hasn't been covered. That is what came in on those 18-millimeter dump trucks that I watched back in that weekend.
Okay.
Um, there are people, which unfortunately, I'm here today, couldn't make it, who say they can't even open their windows anymore, because there's so much dust in the summertime. They don't even bother. We've had houses, we've painted our houses, we don't want it to be sandblasted and have to paint it, you know, over again. We don't want that, we don't wanna look at this stuff. There's, there's supposed to be a buffer around the wetlands. It's not a full buffer, it starts here, it stops well be- before the wetlands, you know? It fell down, it's clearly been down for quite some time. If you're there every day and you actually care, pick it up.
Is grass growing now?
There used to be grass, but you dug it behind my house, it was grass last year, it was grass, it looked decent, but you guys have worked it back out with sand again, but you went back there. It's not, it was, it did form the grass and now it's sand again.
That's why we need to have this, so like I said...
Yeah.
They need to have the meeting, then everybody can have all their questions and asks, they bring it back here and straighten it out.
Yep, cause I mean, we believe what everybody's saying, both sides, but we need to be, look for ourselves, see.
Yeah.
That would be the best way to...
That's the best way of doing it, yeah.
And I think that's the most fair way for both parties.
So at this point now, it's a cease and desist, no more work until we have this meeting?
That's up to the building inspector.
That's, that's up to the building commissioner.
With the 50-foot buffer zone, I mean, now that he's aware of the 50-foot buffer zone, the trees, he should not be taking any more trees down by 50-foot buffers.
Right. So you generally have a copy of the bylaw? If you don't, you can come down tomorrow here and get a copy and then...
It's right online as well.
Why are you going online?
I have another question, and I know, I'm just trying to get this all out there.
Yeah.
Um, it was supposed to be, I guess, greenhouse and farm stand. How long are you supposed to provide to produce a green stand in a farms, you know, greenhouse and a farm stand? I mean, we're going on years here. And now there's mounds of dirt, are you having a tiered blueberry field? I mean, you should see the mountains, they're gigantic. And you're taking away from this, this area that you call a 30-foot, which some people do have it, but I wouldn't call it 30 feet, you're taking away that part of the property line and mounding it up further away. What is the point of that? I don't understand. I, I mean, there's, there's a whole list of things that, you know, what...
Like I said, that's why we need to have this meeting.
Right, I'm just trying to get them all out there, you know, I mean, the tree removal, what hap...
And keep on saying the same thing to you.
What happens, what happens?
I understand your frustration.
Right, what happens when, you know, it is discovered that he removed well more than 50 feet of a buffer? Does he come in and put them back in? I mean, is he gonna be made to put some trees back in for us? I, I mean, how is that gonna go?
We're only part of that Earth Removal Board, so we have other members, so for us to say that we're going to ask them to do something would, it, it wouldn't be prudent here, it would be against our open meeting laws. We can't come to a decision, right now, we have to post the meeting within 48 hours, then we have to have all the members here, so...
You can come talk during public forum at any of our meetings and bring up stuff like this, but we, at that meeting, seeing it wasn't posted for 48 hours, we can't make, is what she's explaining.
But we're not even, right now, the Earth Removal Board.
Right, and we're not the full board right now anyway. And, and that's just the state or open meeting law.
We, we were there on Friday when the building inspector did come out, he took pictures, and he said he was going to do a thing. But there is also an appointment tomorrow with the DEP. DEP will be coming out, Mike Penny and Joe Bolino, and Lenny Izzo from the Board of Health, and possibly someone from the Conservation Commission. Um, they are expected to be going onto the property to inspect for solid waste and wetland compliance.
So they go through the motions, they file all this. So the building inspector has contacted the right people, and then if we schedule this meeting, everybody will have been on the site. Then he'll make a decision.
Yeah.
Richard, how long do you know when that meeting is, will it be posted?
Yes, ought to be posted online, it gets posted online, the bulletin board outside here, in the building, it's also posted. We thank you people for coming. Yeah. Because this tells us, well, this tells us what's going on, because a lot of things we don't see, this is why we ask people to come to these meetings, enter the open forum, to tell the selectmen what's going on that we don't see that we need to, uh, take care of, or at least get them wheels in motions, and basically you should thank yourselves because you're the ones that's keeping the wheel in motion.
We just want our trees back.
One thing should be done, right, and, you know, that stuff that seems definitely is not clean, so what if?
Well, that's why we have the bylaws, is to make sure.
And maybe, you know, you should read those bylaws, and go, actually, do not know what you're doing. We're talking years of this, you know?
Yeah.
And you, you come up here and you say, I didn't know, I wasn't aware, they're, they're online, I've been looking at them, I've been reading them, so.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have approval minutes for April seventh, two thousand fifteen, at seven p.m. Make a motion, accept the meeting, ready for session, at seven p.m. Second up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hey, thanks for coming tonight, Rich. You're welcome. Uh, approval minutes of one, of warrants.
Yep, we do have one more.
Good night, Rich.
Uh, this is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending April eighteenth, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
Both of you, two accept. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will, all, most of all know that the town accountant just got back from vacation, so she wasn't able to have the warrants to me for this evening. So you will likely get a call later this week to come in and sign the vendor warrants.
We have nobody for reports of town officials. Uh, correspondence. I got an email from, it's the only thing I have, I got an email from a resident asking about the, I think I CC'd you on that.
Did, yeah.
If church was gonna be the permanent, for now, indefinitely, I mean, and I explained to him, now he didn't leave his name except Bill, so that's fine. But, um, I, I told him, if, if we had to use a school, we would either have to pay a lot of police officers to police every hallway, or close a school, and we still hadn't even got permission from the school to begin with. Even though we own the building, we need to be on that, so I explained that to him. I explained to him that Saint Augustine's offered the hall at no cost to the town, other than us having to set up a team, which we do here. So, so anybody contacts, you know, that was the response I gave this gentleman.
Um, the only email, uh, the only correspondence I'd like to just read into the minutes is, how many students we have at Norfolk?
We have three currently.
And we have their tuition rates for next?
Yeah, they didn't change.
Yeah, it's twenty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars.
And we're out of, right, we're out of district?
Out, yeah.
So in-county tuition is one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars?
Yeah.
And out-of-county tuition is twenty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars?
Correct, yeah.
Just want it.
So, so now, not that this is gonna be a quick fix, but at, at my last CMRPC meeting, there's been a lot of meetings going on, and they claim that this year they're gonna do a lot of work investigating and in Worcester County, getting our own agricultural school. It's, the whole county is suffering. Kids are going everywhere, it's different.
Yeah, because there's a lane.
It's not gonna be a quick fix.
Two, two in the state?
Yeah. Segregance it.
Two, right?
So, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh. Now you come. It's a big concern, not only for our town, so, big enough that CMRPC is looking at, at the issue. And they would, and that's one of their goals, is to have an agricultural school for the Worcester County. And, um, of course, even if it was approved today, it would take two or three years to build a school like that. So, obviously, it's not, it's down the road, but yeah, that's, that's, uh, I mean, the letter says that, you know, we're pleased to announce we haven't increased our tuition this year, but we're, it looks like the out-of-district is balancing the budget for the whole school.
Yeah.
And that's.
Well, not only that, but then you have to take into our, our tri-county.
Yeah.
And then you take into the amount that is in the BMR budget for those kids that go out, there's a line item that we have to make up the difference. So we pay that too. So, you know, when people, you know, I, I, sometimes they say, you wouldn't believe what we pay for some of these other schools.
Yeah.
You know, I just, I just wanted to say it out loud.
And that doesn't include the transportation.
Oh, yeah, and that's the killer.
Yeah, and that's, so me and Rich were talking earlier, before the meeting tonight, Rich Pervella, how those three kids with the transportation, we're looking at eighty grand out of our pocket for three kids to go to school.
There is nothing we can do about that.
It would, it's cheaper for us to send somebody to, to, to Mount St. Charles. Not that, it's a great school, and of course, I like farming, you know, so I definitely agree with an agricultural school.
No, I.
But I don't agree with that price, that's.
Right.
But.
I agree. I think the kids should have that choice and the opportunity to go there. I just don't think we should be fleeced.
No.
And that's what it feels like.
Oh, we're. Apparently, that's a game in the state. Would be handcuffed and, you know, like the old days in the playground, when the big kids shook you upside down for your lunch money. That's what's happening.
Yeah.
And what's even more alarming is we, we have the three in now that we will have next year, unless they move out of the district, but, um, six have applied. Six additional.
For the Aggie?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have, um, in our budget with the finance committee, we have budgeted for two additional on top of the three.
Depending on who gets.
But if more than two are accepted, we're gonna be in trouble.
And more and more people are going there, because they're busing situations, and, you know, they have additional stops now, they have, you know, more late buses coming, they're very accommodating to the sports kids, there's a bus that comes back in, you know, does a main drop-off, you know, to late at night and stuff like that, so. They're starting to really gather the students from this area.
I, I will say that the town was very fortunate last year, when we did go out to bid on the out-of-district transportation, that travelers transit, um, really came in and, and gave us a great bid.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we're very fortunate with that.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't continue doing that for.
Or you don't need a bigger bus.
Right, if we, we have more than six, we will need to move through a bigger bus, which will increase the cost.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah. The last correspondence, is that all the ones you had? The other school?
Yeah.
Is, uh, well, we talked about it in the finance, but, uh, we're getting a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for fiscal year sixteen for chapter ninety, so. Mr. Chairman, on correspondence, there's the. Oh, that's on, okay, that's in the new business. So, that's it. Uh, we have one resignation tonight, and that's from Jackie Wheeler. Uh, she has already informed the Centennial Committee of this, and, uh, so I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Jackie for all the years of the historical and the Centennial, and the Dean's Selectment for all her, her help, and, uh.
She still is on our cultural.
Yeah, on the cultural, yeah, so thank her for all her, all her help and everything she has done and still does do, so, uh, so we regrettably accept your resignation.
We'll send out a letter thanking her.
So moved. So moved.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Ellen.
Yep, very briefly this evening, I mentioned to the chairman, I do have Chief Landry's evaluation prepared. Um, I have two originals ready, I'm not sure how the board wants to present that, whether you want to schedule a meeting.
Last two years, I believe it was, me, John and I.
Just two members.
Is that okay? Whatever you want. We won't beat you too hard. Okay, be gentle. Bring your catcher's mask, that's all.
So is there a motion from the board to authorize, um, Mr. Barrett and Mr. Laura to meet with the chief?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I received an email from the interim building commissioner, Mr. Sheehan, uh, last week, advising me, unfortunately, he's given the, um, position some thought, and he's decided not to apply for the permanent position.
Okay.
So he is willing.
He's just a temporary there.
He is willing to stay.
Permanent temporary.
Uh, he is willing to stay, he's planning at, at minimum through the end of May. Um, but depending if we find somebody and what the transition is like, he's willing to stay longer if needed, but, um, probably not into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
So that position has been posted again, I've sent it out to all the local towns, um, all the building inspectors that I know to put out feelers.
Nobody wants it.
I haven't gotten any bites yet, but it, it is out there.
Better pay than it was.
Yeah, true, true, and we'll have a secretary.
When it was lousy pay, with no secretary, we had how many applicants, right, five or six or whatever it was. Oh, well.
I've received a couple of requests, um, for the board to hold another informal question and answer session. Remember when we met up at the community center one Saturday morning?
Yeah.
Um, that was very well received, um, and I've asked if the board is gonna be doing that again anytime soon. Is that something you wanted to think about for the summer or for the fall, or?
Either.
And so you either do it June or you don't do it till the fall?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, spring or fall.
Yeah, I believe it was October when we did it, because we had Halloween stuff out there.
Yeah, I was out, I was at the Cape.
Do you want to plan again for the fall maybe, or?
Talk to us in October. Well, you had a girls' club camp there.
No, we go away each year for Halloween adventure.
Yeah, good. Oh, you had a quiet adventure last year. Yeah, we could do another fall.
For the fall, at the same location at the, the community center?
Yeah, sure. One town resident, uh, indicated.
Yeah, I'll give them a call, and, um, yep, talk about dates and see when they're.
I'm, I'll be out of town again on the, the twenty-fourth of that October.
What about earlier?
And let them know.
Probably Columbus Day weekend.
And, and, and let the Chestnut Hill Club know that if, let's just say we do the second Saturday of September, and then somebody comes along and wants to rent the place. They can bump us, long as we have a notice, so they don't lose their seventy-five bucks.
The second Saturday of September, everyone will be at the town park for the fall festival.
Oh, yeah, well, I was just using that as a gift.
I'm just saying. September twelve. So.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I can send you some times.
Okay, we'll get some dates from them.
All right.
Um, and that is it.
Good. Anybody having old business? All right, new business? We have the breaking parade, it's, uh, they've been through here before.
Yeah.
They give us their bike route, uh.
We don't even know they're in town.
No.
Their signs go what they're going down.
They just kind of breeze through.
They're very, they're very good about removing the signs, like, you know, for their room and everything.
They do appreciate, uh, water, if anybody has water along the route, just be out there when they come by and pass them a water. My only concern with that is a safety concern, and that's Lincoln Street, just by the curve, uh, outside the church. You should start to make that bend coming this way. Yeah. Uh, you know, they use skinny tire bikes, so they're gonna edge it towards the center of the road, and it's very narrow there, so it's a safety concern. Yeah. Yeah, no, they come through here pretty much every year. Yeah. There's actually another one usually comes through too. So anyway. Oh, no, I don't have a problem, figure, support it. So is there a motion to?
I make a motion.
Second.
The breakage drive.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a toll day?
Yes, uh, this was submitted by the, um, American Legion, uh, Legion by Mr. Clark. Uh, they're looking for April fifteenth, I'm sorry, April twenty-fifth of two thousand fifteen, which is this coming Saturday, ten a.m. until two p.m., which is within the guidelines.
Okay.
And it has been signed off on by the, um, the chief and the highway department as well.
Make a motion to accept the toll day.
Second. Is the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Helen, have you received one from the Centennial?
No, Mrs. Robinson did inquire, and I explained to her how to obtain the forms on the website, but I haven't received them back yet.
All right. Because I have it in my calendar, and I thought that's what that was for.
Um, okay. It was, um, she called it, uh, May sixteenth. She gave me the dates, yeah, I wrote it, uh, May sixteenth, I wrote it in, so I've got it in there.
All right, I don't know if she's around, I'll message her.
Uh, next, we have the, oh, the town council. Gotta pull that, pull that tree out of there.
You working? You working, that's what you say it is.
I hope you all understood my cryptic notes. In summary of the five different proposals received.
Yeah.
Um, although town council services isn't, it's exempt from thirty B, so you're not required to go out to bid.
Right.
You did request a formal RFP, and by doing so, you then do have to rank them officially as well. So that is why we do have to do the ranking sheet, so that I can keep those in the file. And I'm more neurotic than ever about that, because when the auditors were here, they did pull some of my procurement files, so. Um, I just want to make sure we do everything by the book, without a doubt. Um, so I'm not sure if you've had enough time to re, review and rank them, or if we want to go off camera to give you some time, otherwise, it's gonna be a lot of dead air. That's up to you.
Yeah, well.
I have all my notes, and I have them ranked in my notes, but I have not, because I wasn't sure if I could ink on this, if this was a.
Yeah, you can write it down.
My document?
That's yours to keep.
But does this go into, does?
Your numbers.
The only thing I'll need is the last.
Go to you?
Just the last sheet with the numbers is what I'll keep in the file.
Then I would need no more than five minutes to put this into this. That's just me, I don't know of anyone else.
We've got the shit here. Well, this is for the, after the interview, huh, this part, the posting. And then, the only thing I didn't. I didn't rank the past performance references yet, because, I mean, I read the reference, yeah.
Well, no one puts in that reference.
But I didn't call any other towns.
Right, what you're, what that means is that they included, what we asked for in the RFP is that they include names and contact information.
Yeah.
It's not actually that they checked out, it's just that they included what we asked for in the proposal.
I didn't, I didn't even rank one of them at all. Am I supposed to?
Yeah, you would, you would need to.
Okay. It was just the last one I didn't rank, because I have a problem with that. Now, compliment and pay, that's narrow, that's what I thought.
And I think we use Merrick O'Connell.
Merrick O'Connell was our labor council.
Just for the, uh, negotiations. Uh, just police used them for some time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that was the only union we had.
In their presentation, they seemed to push labor counseling.
Which we really don't need a lot of.
Yeah.
We've been fine doing our negotiations on our own with the chiefs. We've been fine doing our negotiations on our own with the chief's help and Mr. Laura's help. We've saved, we were paying $20,000 per negotiation for that.
That was $20,000 in pound money, I mean, I mean, what a waste of, I think we, I mean, the last time that we were negotiating with the police, they were speechless. They were speechless, they, you know what to say.
Ben, I, Ben, I is three contracts.
Yeah, we've been... Well, we have a new agent now, though, I don't know how, I don't know if it'll go as smooth as it did, but I still haven't heard back from him, so...
And that's, they really have the highest rates as well, for the top guy, is $325 an hour.
What's that, John?
Mr. Attorney Mattis charges $325 an hour. That's the highest rate on the tablet.
Oh, Merrick?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, those are $410.
Yeah, we paid.
You know, Merrick O'Connell basically said, these are our four rates for our attorneys.
The one we use at work?
And then they said, but we're willing these hard times to do $190. But they were, I think they were just showcasing what they couldn't get.
Right.
Because I had one at $410.
At the conference, they were $12.
Yeah, I guess, I think so.
You need these tonight?
I kinda like...
Ideally, yeah, we do need to vote on at least who the top three are, so I can get them in here.
My top two was Merrick and Petrini.
Petrini was my second. K and P, um, I actually rated them one, although they're, you know, they're a big firm. They indicated that they would like to continue or renew the relationship with Millville. My only problem with big companies, though, or big firms, is that we're a very tiny piece. You know, I researched all the, where they'd be attorneys would be...
How much TLC are they gonna give the little guy?
That's right, that's my major concern.
Yeah.
I did like Petrini, but, um...
He's almost local, he's Framingham, that's not that far.
That was, that was part of my consideration.
And Merrick is Worcester, so he's close. He's, that's the closest. And two from Boston.
Yeah, Deutsch Williams, the guy that runs that, the principal, he's, he's strong with MMA, he's on their board and all that.
Yeah. Yeah, but that fancy sounding name has a fancy price too. Two and a quarter was his, I think.
Deutsch Williams, $220.
And if you look at that Petri, where was that?
Petrini?
Petrini. Three of the lawyers that they put on their list all started at Copeland and Page.
Yeah, that's, they did. I noticed that.
Like, one, I actually wrote the number one, and then I changed it to a two, and then I had to change it to a three.
The, one of the re...
I think that they seem to be more of a starting to grow bigger.
Yeah. Maybe, they've been around for a while, but they might be getting into municipal a lot more.
Yeah, in there for the municipal, I only went back to 2001 within the paperwork I saw.
Right.
As far as having years of experience in, um, in municipal government. I'm just gonna add mine up, I'll be there.
This lady, St. Andre, she seems pretty...
I was pretty impressed with their credentials.
Her out and her education, she was scum of the lot, and which one is that?
Petrini.
Copeland Page? No, under Petrini, she would be our main...
Her name is St. Andrew?
I was St. Andrew.
Yeah. Petrini. I was pretty impressed with her, her personal resume, as well as the firm's resume. Then I did notice, luckily Helen did a lot of stuff for us. Petrini and Merrick have a lot more yeses than no's than the others, on experiences and... So my, my thought would be, if they don't do a certain item, then they gotta outsource it, and is that gonna cost us more? Well, just like when we did the cable contract, we, we were outsourced because Brad didn't do that, that's not his specialty, and that's fine, but...
But he came from Stoneham.
Yeah, yeah. And he doesn't even, and all the way from Stoneham, and he wanted to go to Wright's Chicken Farm, knew all about it. That's, that was his big...
I was thinking of calling him for a recommendation.
But, um, no, so I mean, stuff like, and that was a little thing, but if something big comes along, are we gonna get outsourced, you know? So that's what, that's why I liked Petrini and Merrick too, they have a lot less, a lot less no's. Petrini's paralegal is a lot cheaper per hour.
But they also said that, that price will go up?
Yeah.
Five dollars?
Yeah, they said they have, they have the right to.
The right to, yeah. Me and him, I know.
I was talking to a guy that's a lawyer last weekend, he gets $975 an hour for one, one big corporation he does work for. They sent him to England and Germany, and, because there's international contracts that he deals with, and... Yeah, so we all should have been lawyers.
So what have you given you our top three? Or just all of them?
Um, yep, you can give me your top three, or if you want to just read me your numbers.
Because my numbers don't necessarily reflect who I want to give you.
Well, I didn't add my notes.
Because some people might not be the best on price, but they have a experience and work performance that is stronger, so you know, their, their up tops are their fours, and then your four fives, and then down belows are their threes for price. And then you literally look at another one on my list, and they're totally flip-flopped. So...
I, I wouldn't...
I have three that are all relatively close, but I'll give you my numbers, do you want them?
Sure.
Um, Williams is 37, O'Connell is 38, Petrini is 35, Copeland and Page is 41, and Horn is 29.
Now, I never give, give five points, unless I...
I'm a three person, and you go up or down?
Unless I can talk to them. But Williams, I gave him 33. Merrick O'Connell, I gave him 28. Petrini, I gave him 34. Copeland and Page, I gave him 36 and a half. And Horn, 25.
I think we had halves.
Well, you know, if you're between the three and the four, you get three and a half.
Nobody's gonna send you, well, I shouldn't say that, but these big firms are going to send you phenomenal packets. Because they have the manpower to do that. So, on paper, we can make anyone look good. Getting them in the door and seeing what how they perform is the...
The only, the only one was, uh...
I gave, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I gave, uh, Williams 36, Merrick 44 and a half, Petrini 42 and a half, Copeland and Page 38 and a half, and Horn 30.
Should've been a teacher, you're an easy marker.
We get, huh? We give, uh, we give halves in my company.
Well, I did too.
We gave, we gave one guy a...
Good thing you don't fill out report cards, that would never fly.
Listen, we gave, we gave one guy a three on a parent, he says, "You guys supply the uniforms."
That's funny.
Well, I, "Shave!" Oh, and soap and water, my God. And it's kinda hard for Ernie Horn to show any experience, because he's no at it.
In the meantime, it's very important you don't lose these, because I need them for the file. Do you want me to hold them for now till, and I can give them back to you when they come in for their interviews, or?
Are these here?
Yeah. It's up to you, if you can hold it and not lose it.
I'll keep, I'll just keep it in the pack.
I'm gonna keep mine, so, probably because of the day before interviews, I'm probably gonna go through it again to...
Yeah. I've got notes on mine.
That's, that's fine, just don't lose them. You ready?
Yeah. All right, uh, Williams is 33, O'Connell is 24, um, Petrini is 41, and KP, 26, and Horn's 24. And you can take mine, so I don't lose it.
I don't know, that just came. Caught off the meal. I've got two, isn't it?
Just another toy for the arsenal.
Yeah.
Who gave this to us?
Helen, should just pass it out.
What?
The Foxborough reporter. "Fare thee well, Mr. Rensis," he's, he's the guy from Williams, Deutsch Williams.
That's right?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got, um, Petrini at 38, so they would be the number one. Copeland and Page at 35 and a half would be number two. I've got Deutsch Williams at 34 and three quarters, they would be number three. And Merrick O'Connell is number four at 33 and a half. And Horn Law is fifth at 27. So, is it the board's wishes to call in Petrini, Copeland and Page, and Deutsch Williams? Will need a motion?
I make a motion. Call law firms as great.
Second, Petrini?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And when would you like to conduct those? Did you want to do them?
Let me ask you this, when's this one up?
Um, they're done June 30th.
Oh, you can do it right away.
But, um, yeah, I was hoping that the first meeting in June, you'd be able to vote, so if we could interview during May.
Right.
Did you want to schedule another night, or do it before selectments? We've got CMR PC at 6:00 on the 18th.
No.
I think it should be its own.
Yeah.
I don't want to rush.
I agree, yeah.
I don't want people filtering in for a 7 o'clock meeting and...
Do you want to wait till after town meeting then, so it's calmed down a little bit, or?
Yeah.
On a Wednesday night?
Wednesdays?
After town meeting, on Wednesday would be fine.
You're gonna call them all three at the same night?
I'd like, I'm gonna try to schedule them all the same night.
Wednesdays are a little more difficult for me.
Unless we do it on a off Monday.
Well, we don't really have it.
Really isn't one.
There's Monday and Memorial Day.
Yeah, Memorial Day's before.
Tuesdays work pretty okay, and Thursdays work pretty okay. Wednesdays, I just, I'm, I've got, I've got four things on my calendar with two more below it.
Any night except Mondays, Mondays I have selectman's meetings.
And then Tuesdays, we decide for Mr. Baker, so...
Oh, that's right.
I don't care. As long as they Friday, then.
Well, what's our, what's our May 4th meeting looking like?
Um, you've got the goals, board of selectmen goals at 6:30.
Yeah, I have that. I'm just thinking if we keep the agenda, would it be more important for Bob to be here for the interviews or for the meeting? You know, could we shift one to the Tuesday? Shift the selectman meeting to Tuesday, or? Do you know what I mean? I mean, what time are we looking at having the, these firms come out?
Be evening, it's up to the board. If you wanted to start at 6:00, we could try to get them for 6:00, 6:30 and 7:00, and maybe start the selectmen at 7:00.
I think Jennifer made a good point. You don't want to be rushed, you've got three different sets of lawyers, I, I agree with Jennifer.
And some of them are gonna go over their time.
I don't think a half hour's enough.
I really don't. So, I, I have to agree with Jennifer, we're gonna have to do it on an off day, it's just for them.
6:00, 7:00, and 8:00? All right, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00? What day you talk?
Well, you know, the good thing is, is what happens with the interviews, you say, "I'm gonna give you, you know, 45 minutes." It goes to 50, you know, it kinda goes over. But the next guy arrives, or the next firm arrives early. Do you know, so you can, do you mind coming in now? So, so even though you say 7:00 there, you, you can take them almost back to that.
If they're ready at 10:00, I'll look at it.
You don't want all three firms to be in the same room, though.
Well, you can set up a thing like a waiting area, I mean, it is a public meeting, but you could have your... We, um, when we did the school superintendent?
Yeah.
We had a person...
Host them?
Host them.
To the library.
They had coffee and snacks and cookies, and there was a couple students who kinda sat with them.
I was into that, yeah.
But I mean, maybe we wanna hold our, maybe we wanna hold our interviews upstairs in the veterans' room.
Yeah.
And have an art greet here, blah, 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 and then, you know, one leave, one goes up, one up the front stairs, one down the back, type of, they, literally, that's what we did with the superintendent, one went out one door, and a staff person went and got the other one out the other way. I mean, it was a very smooth transition, but I'm just saying, we might wanna think about host, having someone greet them.
Well, did you want to think about, with the chief actually sitting here, you just made a good point, Mrs. Wang, do you want to think about having different, um...
Locations?
Locations, and maybe have the chief ask some questions, or maybe have the town planner or the building commissioner sit and ask a few questions, and...
You know what?
You know, maybe the board can ask it, set, and then send them on their way, and...
There's a lot of questions that the planner needs, there's a lot of questions that the chief needs, that we don't know about, that he's gonna ask, for certain things that he runs into, he's gotta know if they're gonna be qualified enough, or if he likes, I agree 100%, I think we ought to have other people on the board, and definitely the chief of police involved in this interview.
If Joe waiting would like to... Selectment planning and, and, um, public safety at the...
I don't want it.
Yeah.
Whatever you want. Also, it benefits you. Absolutely, there's some questions ready to know.
And maybe if it's a night that we could ask and take out of our budget, even if we pay, you know, Chrissy or Diane, you know, "Do you mind hosting," or Marsha, "Do you mind hosting this evening?" You'll be in the office, you'll greet them, make small talk while they're waiting. I don't have a prob, you know why? Because it makes us look a little better? You know, because they're interviewing us also.
Yeah, that's right, I agree. What would day would you pick before you... What would day would you pick before they do the...
They may leave, tell us.
You have a conflict of day, right?
Jennifer, what, what words do you, Jennifer?
They may leave and pull their proposal.
Yeah.
Unless the coffee's good.
I'm not. Um, Wednes, Wednesdays are my hardest nights. I mean, for me to do that, it's really... I, I would be wiped, and then I would be hand-tilted from six to nine. It, it would be near impossible.
But what do you want, Tuesday?
Uh, Tuesdays are fine, Thursdays I can make work. I can rearrange my things on Thursday, cause I only have one thing on Thursday. Like I'm saying, Wednesday I'm six things deep between myself, my husband, and my kids.
The fifth, and we have the seventh.
Fifth, the seventh.
So, why don't we work with those two, Helen? And see what you come up with.
Four-town meeting?
Yes. Everybody agree?
Yeah, the public hearing's the sixth, so...
Yo?
Yeah.
You okay?
It's alright with me.
Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, you gotta apologize, I am on a family vacation from May ninth until the eighteenth. But I planned it a while ago. The middle of the Atlantic Ocean, so I can be off the road.
Okay, so when's our next?
Was I needed.
When is it? The what, the what?
Uh, from May ninth until May eighteenth.
So, you're not gonna be at the town meeting?
No.
To speak on your hunting bylaws?
I didn't have someone speaking when we had. Actually, Mr. Murica, we worked everything out, he's gonna actually speak on the honor. A law firm signs a coup.
What's that on?
Um, the Greenway.
Okay. How about, uh, Jennifer, the nineteenth or, and the twenty-first?
Yep, those work also.
Why don't we do those now?
Alright, I'll work with those.
Is that where the chief is? I want you here.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, he'd be here the fifth.
I planned it for each a while ago, and I needed it.
Nineteenth, twenty-first.
I didn't get my invitation.
Which cruise?
Is it coming?
I have my own, I have my own cruise.
Yeah, I know, but...
I got my own cruise.
I've done that cruise, out of Boston.
Actually, I have a full load there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Nice.
Alright, so why don't you get back to us on that?
You're back in town on the nineteenth, chief?
Good for you. Alright, so... Well, it's either nineteenth or the, uh, twenty-first. I don't know, I don't know what.
It was five, seven?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
Nineteenth or the twenty-first. Helen can get back to us.
Give me some paper. Huh?
Well, I'll, I'll put it in my phone when I get home. This is my, my work phone.
Oh, is that my phone? My work phone?
No, I don't want it to go, I got enough for... Okay. So, that's that, that then.
There's four.
Alright, under, also on, on the new business, I just... We had, we had something going on Fa, on, on Facebook, the, one of the articles in the town wants. If, if we'd like to put any town information on Facebook, the town has a Facebook and a Twitter account. It just looks, in my eyes, this is only my opinion, it looks more professional if the board...
I can speak to that.
Would post something.
The resident asked me for that, and I shared that through private message.
Right.
So, they went, they went, no, and it's not a problem. And I, and I'll do it again.
Yeah.
It was discussed in an open meeting.
Yeah.
I had the thing. What, what is the hunting bylaw? I said, "Oh, I have it, we've already discussed it, we've put it on the, you know..." So, I said, "Let me, let me snap it for you and, and take a pic, and send it to you," and that was sent privately.
Yeah.
Then at that point, they sent it to someone else to look, and then it becomes this whole other things, and then it ended up there. I spoke to the chief the day it happened. I said to him, "Oh, I wanted to catch you." I said, "I want you to know that, you know, how that transpired," and it was fine, and then we spoke again today. And, but if a resident asks me for something, and I'm in possession of it, and it is public, it's already been discussed at a meeting, if I say no...
No, we're obligated to give them.
If I say no, then it looks like we're hiding or protecting, or we're not open. So, i- it is a fine balance.
Yeah.
It really is. But I could've photocopied it and dropped it off at the gentleman's house.
Yeah.
And still, it could've been scanned and put on. So, um, I mean, a lot of selectmen and school committees now put their whole packet online to be seen. So, it, it, you know, it's, it's a lesson. But like I said, if another resident was to ask me for something, and I'm in possession, and we've talked about it, I, I would do it again.
Yeah.
And not to have the fallout that occurred.
No, I agree, there was no intent.
No, I know there was no bad intent. I mean, bad thing that was intended, but it just happened.
But you can't control, you can't control, as I said to the chief, you can't control some people who are sitting behind a keyboard, and with no repercussion of their actions.
Yeah.
Um, you, you can't control that, and, you know, that was there. I said, "As long as it stimulates discussion and conversation, and gets more people to the meeting," my, my comment was, "Maybe they'll stay for the budget." Type of thing, you know? Because we do have more pressing, in my, in my opinion, we have more pressing issues than that. But it, you know? But I ca, I mean, I, I shared it, I had it, and that was, that's it.
So, I guess legally, that's a public records request.
Yeah.
I wondered if it just would make more sense if a board member gets a request like that, to have the people call the town hall and ask for a copy? That way, we're kind of alerted to it, and we can give Chief Landry the heads up, or we can make the determination whether this should go on the whole town Facebook, instead of just sending it to this one person, or... Cause I think a lot of it was the appearance of, "Why did that one person get it, and nobody else saw it," and...
Yeah.
Cause they asked for it.
But, I mean, we have conversations every day with people about things that are going on in town.
Yeah.
Someone asks you, you're, I get stopped in Walmart, I get stopped at the post office, "What's this, what's this?" And you kind of, I get, when the chief pulled up to my house Wednesday, I had the neighbors standing there asking me about the property at one-seventy-one Central, you know? So, you get stopped, and I can't, I can't stop everything and say, "Oh, I'm sorry, I can't share that with you," or I can't, you know, have to check. If it's, if it's in public meeting, and I'm in possession, I, I, that's what, I think that's our job to inform people and get them involved.
Oh, it is.
Not make it like we're jumping through hoops to get information.
No, I didn't, that, no, I mean...
And it was, and it was sent.
We're obligated almost to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it was sent, this is a draft, this, blah, 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 you know, the whole, that's, it's like that game of telephone. It changes, it adds to it, and it takes a life of its own.
Yeah, so I guess, really, my question is, what should, you know, what should we do? You know, for down the road, when stuff like this happens? Just to, just so the town doesn't look like we're hiding things, or if, if somebody says they, they're gonna put it on Facebook? Okay, so, call Helen and say, "Helen, put this on Facebook, so it doesn't look like the..."
And actually, when I, actually, when I spoke to the gentleman, and I, I explained what, you know, cause we had a conversation
Yeah.
after I gave it to him, and he says, "I have some ideas," and I said, "I'm sure the chief would be wanting to hear them." And I was gonna go and talk to them on Saturday about their proposed changes. And then I had spoke to the chief, I talked to the person, I said, "We don't need to meet, it seems like you guys have started a conversation, looks like it's gonna be fixed, I know you had a conversation with them tonight, and it was, it was taken care of." But it was kind of one of those things that, you know, it's not just a resident, but it's a friend. And when they ask you, and you can help, then you, you help.
Well, definitely.
So, I mean, in, in the future, yeah, would I give a heads up? Yeah, I shared this information with the resident.
Yeah.
Um, but you never know when something's gonna go... You never know when something, you never know when something, you say something to somebody, and then it's talked about at the soccer fields, and the this, and the that, you don't know.
Look at the foolish things you see on the news that go viral.
Yeah. But you never know what somebody's gonna take, and then start talking about.
No, I know.
You don't, it can be at just our regular meetings, too.
My only problem was, the critic didn't call and ask specific questions. Instead, they attacked me in the mass media.
Yeah.
Which didn't make sense, it was only a draft.
Yeah.
We should've called and asked questions, when we knew that, so...
Yeah.
Uh, it's one, one comment, um, more or less, safety of the public isn't my concern, I should be doing something else. Well, I'm sorry, that's, you are my concern. And that, that really hit home, I couldn't figure it out.
Well, that's, we know, it's our rights.
So, comments like that, and they had our A call, and, um, anti-gun. Since sort of the government's been doing it for thirty-three years. Anti-gun? How does that work?
Yeah.
Things like that, where they had only half the story, and it just went on, on the wack.
And the, and the conversations I was having was, was to fix it, to make it better for everyone.
I'm gonna say that a problem with, with the critic, that's a problem for people.
Yeah.
Who hide behind the computer, on mass media, make these foolish comments without calling, or asking a question in front of the board of selectmen. It's like a personal attack for no reason whatsoever. It just didn't make sense. More trying to protect the citizens, uh, people who are gonna walk on the greenway.
Not only our citizens, okay?
It's just any citizens, because I was gonna have...
People come to the Blackstone Valley from all over that, all over the...
I was just saying, I was just talking to somebody, and she rides bikes, and she was talking about the bike way. And she was, and, and she said she rides when Providence, when Socket won. Um, and she was really excited for this to open, cause she lives in Northbridge, I was up there on Monday, um, with some friends in the morning, and, um, she was talking about it and how excited she was. But they're riding twenty-six miles a day.
I do that in a car.
Yeah. So, you are, you know, we're getting more than just our town residents out there, that's what's gonna be coming through. So, no, it's a good article.
I mean, they can hunt, right on the path, as long as they don't release the...
You, in terms of the town right now, but, now, the bottom line is, I do the math, um, they will complete from Central Street into Upstreet this year.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be finished.
Wow.
The bridge is knocked, cause of the seven million dollar repair.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is, they expected one hundred thousand people to either walk, bicycle, jog, um, rollerblading, on that bike trail. We cannot have people discharging firearms in that area. That's just foolish. So, that's the opposite of protecting people walking on the greenway. That's all it is. Somebody turns it to something other, which shouldn't be. So, that's very resolved, I think we're good with that. But they're moving ahead with the greenway, and there's only people on it.
They snowshoeing some of them, too.
Yeah, it's not even finished, and they're running now.
Mm-hmm. This weekend, they were...
It's gonna be crazy.
This weekend, it was so beautiful, and I was driving up Central Street, and there was a whole family walking down, and there was some people coming out.
And the thing about the numbers, one hundred thousand people through Millville, is incredible. So, we have to protect them, along with the town residents. And this is the only way to do it.
Can we put a toll booth?
Yeah.
Get the old train track under the, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a good addition on the greenway.
Yeah.
They're going faster than they thought.
Someone told me last fall, who works with the greenway, that, um, though it was projected for sixteen, that they felt that fifteen was a really good, the only exception was the kind of the bridge.
And you can see it, you can see it here. It divides the town.
Do you see how nice the bridge came out of Blackstone?
It was very clear of the town. They didn't allow people to discharge firearms
Yeah.
and adjacent to the walkway. It just came. I mean, I wouldn't travel on the water with my family if people would allow that to happen. It wouldn't make sense. I'll come to a resident tonight, a shotgun slot, who traveled two hundred yards. So, what is the problem?
Yeah.
I will say, and, and one of the good things about it is that not everyone is knowledgeable of when it's hunting season.
Yeah.
So, I lived on Hope Street in my apartment prior to getting married, and Alfonso was put in. They were building our house, so I would literally walk down the tracks, and I'd take the ATV trails, and I would come up, and I'd come up through Paulette and Dick Mercio's property through their driveway, I would wave at them, and walk over to the house, just a different way to walk. And one day, I was walking up, and Dick Mercio looked at me, and he goes, "Queenie, you're gonna get yourself killed." And I said, "What are you talking?" He goes, "It's hunting season, you've gotta wear an orange vest." And I said, "Well, how am I supposed to know it's hunting season?" So, I mean, it was, I just, I don't know that information. So, I think by keeping that area protected, so after that, I was like, "I'm never walking that way again," I just walked the street. But not everyone is aware, I'm a streetwalker. But not everyone is aware, cause there's different, there's bow hunting, and then there's shotgun, and then there's... The only way I know is because the trucks are parked on one-forty-six where the new asphalt plant is. That's how we know when hunting season starts, cause all the, um, pickup trucks are there in the morning.
Yeah.
It's the only way I know it starts.
I just don't think we should make the headlines, because someone was hurt.
Right.
Kill it. And that's not the ally we wanna be.
No.
Welcome to the Millville, traveling on the greenway. And make this town grow.
We're probably not the only town that has done it.
I was speaking to DCR today, the problem is, we're unique, because a lot of the greenways are in cities and towns that they don't allow discharges of firearms. So, I was told today, DCR will be preparing legislation to address the greenway anyway, but that may not be soon enough. So, we have to, you know, get going. But their restrictions may be tougher than ours. So, we have to figure that, you know...
Really, there's hunting season twelve months a year.
It depends on what you hunt.
That's right.
Turkey.
Yeah.
You're right.
See how much I know?
Well, see, yeah, all the animals are a different...
But I'm not a hunter, and I don't know hunters.
And this is, believe it or not, I'm not the anti-hunter. It's just what is safe in this town. And that's the bottom line. That's all.
I agree.
I'm not for the hunting. Alright. That's it. Final public forum. So, our next regular meeting is May fourth at seven PM. And we will do signatures next, and then adjourn immediately after.
The, um, warrants, the county new warrants are at the back of the payroll warrant, and I'm just giving you the last page of the annual, I think I'll have to go back and make the changes from the, uh, recommendation numbers.
That's for rolling? It's just for rolling, okay. Phil? That's it for Phil. Oh, yeah, I was gonna mention that, and I forgot. I think Jackie William's emails, though.
I know exactly how that goes. And I was gonna ask Helen, where do you get your, uh, stationery?
W B Mason.
You have to send them a copy?
Probably, yeah.
Cause I sent them an e, I sent them an email whenever, and then I got an email back that they want me to actually send a physical copy of, of it, like mail it to them, like in an envelope with a stamp. And so, I was like...
Try, um, New England Office Supply.
They're, they're the cheapest one.
Yeah.
They've been trickling in, Middleman, then in Press, Staples. Staples is corporate, I'm like, "Well, what can you give me for this?" "Well, it's not on my sheet, ma'am." I'm like, okay, like, I'm thinking, I've got a teenager in there. And the banners are done. I just, I have a hard time with that, ten thousand pages. I've been having three hundred and fifty dollars. Then the thank you, that's what it is. Task, we tell, if it's, if it's a...
Oh, yeah, you still have to. That time a year ago, huh?
I think coyotes is right now. But, or no, then.
Cause most people just use that contract.
I, that's why.
Cause you...
I heard shooting this weekend.
Huh?
I heard shooting this weekend.
Well, maybe it's still going.
I don't know.
Stop. It's a long one. With no... Something like that. We are over long.
How'd you make out with your wagon? In Becca Huns?
My, my, my friend came back with a horse. Another guy came back with a nice old, uh, Amish buckboard wagon.
Oh, those are nice.
Another guy came back with a horse drawn harrow. And I came back with some parts for one of my Amish buggies. To fix up my buggy, it was going to cost me almost five hundred bucks. At the Amish auction, I spent twenty-six dollars. And I was probably spending twenty dollars on Paul Eerich.
Motion to a judge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.